Good afternoon. Welcome to the August, or it's not August. Hello, September 28th meeting of the City of Davenport Zoning Board of Adjustment. The Zoning Board of Adjustment holds public hearings to consider the strict application of the zoning ordinances for hardship variances, special uses, and appeals. I'm Dan Darlin, Chairman of the Davenport Zoning Board of Adjustment. Members present today are, from your left to right, Mike Galliard, Bridget Boyce-Carlson, myself, Jeff Blumker. That's all we have, it's four out of five, okay. Staff present today are Laura Berkley and Scott Copes. If you have a mobile device, please turn it off as it may interfere with the room's electronics. As we conduct our business, we expect that everyone here will conduct themselves in respectful, courteous, and civil manner, and will speak only after being recognized by the Chair. The only exception to this standard is that the staff is expected to interject when necessary to ensure we are properly conducting our business. If anyone wishes to speak on a particular agenda item, you will be provided an opportunity to do so. When recognized by me, please step to the podium, introduce yourself, and provide your input. By practice, each person is only permitted one opportunity to speak. Exceptions to that practice is at my discretion. Of course, if a board member asks a question of anyone, they'll be permitted to speak, to answer that question. Excuse me, to answer that question, but I'll ask you, keep response limited to that specific question. And joining us is Assistant City Attorney Mallory Begbie. Concerned or last mean, are there any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes. First order of business today is hardship variance 23-13 of Ann, I'm not going to try it, on behalf of the project renewal at 513 Warren Street for hardship variance, to reduce required number of off-street parking spaces for the community center from seven to five. Table 17.10-2 requires seven off-street parking spaces for community center. And this is in Ward Three. Is the applicant here? Okay, thank you. May I have a staff report, please?
Scott Copes, Department of Neighborhood Services, Development and Neighborhood Services. As you stated, there's seven off-street parking spaces required with this new building that's being proposed. They are able to provide five of those spaces off-street, and I'll show you the site plan in a minute, which you saw in your packet as well. So there's three spaces on the parking pad, and there's two in the detached garage. And this is just the overall site plan, but I zoomed in a little bit. So the building is on the left, the garage is in the darker gray, and there's three spaces in front of the garage and two in the garage. So this is a further look at the site, zoomed out on our air photo. And the subject property is in the yellow rectangle or polygon. And if you, you'll notice, there's three spaces right in front of their building, and just across the alley on the same side of Warren Street is another six spaces, for these are on-street parking spaces. I would, you know, just like to remind you, the code doesn't count these in residential districts, but if this were a commercially zoned area, they could count for the commercial requirements, if it were a commercial area. I think part of the reason there is that you wouldn't want a community center or a business habitually parking in front of somebody's residence, and since both of these two properties here aren't in front of somebody's residence, that's a property they own on the corner, it's a park, and it's also in front of their own building, I think that lends itself more towards what the ordinance was looking for when they tried to reduce parking requirements. Just kind of throw the building elevation in. So again, this is a new building. There was a four-unit apartment building that was taken down at this location, and this is what they're proposing. We did send out notices to all the adjacent property owners within 200 feet. The 15 notices were sent, none were returned, no phone calls. And in conclusion, the petitioner has demonstrated practical difficulties associated with this property. In accommodateance, five off-street parking spaces. The commercial districts of the code allow for on-street parking space to count towards parking requirements. If the same were true in residential districts, there would be not be a need for this variance due to the abundance of on-street parking and abiding property owner, property owned by the applicant. Our findings, the applicant, or the application of the ordinance creating hardship has been met. And number two, physical and topographical conditions do limit the use of the site. Number three, unique circumstance has been established. And number four, protection of essential character has been established. Staff recommends approval request as proposed.
Any questions? Nope, thanks Scott. Any questions for staff?
No, I just thank you for bringing that up regarding the commercial versus residential. Makes lots of difference.
I do have a quick question. Can you go back to the, where it was enlarged, and it was white and, that one? So, am I correct in saying there's three spaces, and then the space where the trash receptacle is?
Yeah, there's a space here, a space here, and then there's another space, but this one here at the end is, there's a dumpster, so that doesn't count as a parking space.
I thought there was three, including that one.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, anything else for staff? All right, can I have the applicant, please step up to the podium? I'll have you introduce yourself, and I'll ask that you, you have to stay at the podium because the microphone's straight above you on the ceiling, and you can introduce yourself, and sorry I had to admit defeat, your last name, instead of butchering it, I just admitted defeat, so.
I'm Ann Schwikarath with Project Renewal.
Okay, so you can present your petition, if there's anything you need to add to what Scott's presented?
I'll answer any questions you might have, but just wanted to assure you that everything in the document that we submitted in the application is what will be happening. The first floor of the building will be used for youth programming. The second floor will be two apartments for staff who live and work at Project Renewal to live. The park across the street is Project Renewals, and we use that for youth programming. Most of, any other people who come there walk, or, you know, might visit short time and park, it's, but parking around the park is never full.
How many youth we use serve out of this facility, do you know?
On our roster, for a year, we average about 60 kids in grades K through 12. Most of the kids that are present each day range from 35 to 40 kids that get dropped off, picked up, or walk there. Our high school students, if they come, they still can, but what we've seen over the years, because our kids, as they've been growing up with us, have been staying with us through high school graduation, and because of what they're able to do and develop themselves, by the time they get to high school, junior high, high school, they might go out for a sport. The majority of our high school students have part-time jobs, are involved in clubs, activities, band, orchestra, you name it. And so we don't see them every day after school. So we have, once a month, specific things for them, they might, that they come in the evening for a dinner, a guest speaker, activities like that, and some of them may drive themselves there, some still get walk, walk or get dropped off and picked up. So, just the use of it, or the people using the place, it's not long-term parking at all. And our staff who live there will have use of the garage to park in.
So will you have a school bus pick up and drop off there?
There is none.
Okay.
There's a city, we have, it's on a case-by-case basis each year, if a family wants their children who, and if they qualify to ride the bus. Years ago, we've had some, they still drop off at a corner. And then they walk down the block. City bus does the same thing, they stop at the corners in that area.
On a typical event, what do you usually see, as far as parking spots used?
The main use of our parking is for volunteers who come to help after school, or in the summer, when we have our summer program.
What do you estimate?
Five. But also, not in the proposal, but across the street from 513, the property we're talking about, we also own 510 Warren Street, and so it's the same people coming on both sides of the street. And I also live in an adjacent building there, on the corner of Fifth and Warren, and with another person, and we don't use our street parking, we have a garage that we park in.
Ms. Schwikarath, what is the, what is the key objective of your programming?
To be a positive presence in the neighborhood. We offer after-school and summer programming for kids in grades K through 12. One of the unique things about us is that we operate in the neighborhood where we serve. Second unique thing is because we serve K through 12, there's, I'm not aware of any other youth program in the city, or Quad Cities maybe, that serves that age range, which for our families in our neighborhood and community is what that approach works best for, and there's no charge for any of our services ever, so whether we take them on field trips to visit local attractions, or any of the crafts, projects, science experiments, games, sports, field trips, swimming lessons, Project Renewal covers all of that for our youth and families. So every day after school, we help them with homework, if they bring homework, if they don't, we provide them with something to practice, math, reading, writing, some combination. By having good behavior and doing their work, they earn the privileges then to play games, get on computers, or any other fun stuff we have going on that day. We offer them, so the academic support, the recreational activities, life skills, social, emotional experiences, the summertime, and they can stay till 5:30 each day. So typically, 2:30 to 5:30 is when kids are coming and going. The busiest time is probably from 3:00 to 3:30, 3:45, when, because kids are coming from different schools. Some get out at, and are arriving by 2:40, 2:45, some at 3:00, some at 3:15, and so on, and it depends, some kids walk there from their school, some get dropped off. So not everybody's all coming at once, and same, we're there till 5:30 each night, and that can be another busy time, but most parents or families are picking up if they're getting a ride between 5:00 and 5:30, when someone gets off work, whether they work till 4:00 or 5:00, and they will just come by, pick up their kids, so they don't go home and come back. And then some of our kids are walking home, so, again, there's, if there's a busy time or a need for extra parking, it's very unusual, and limited.
I presume you're funded by grants primarily?
Mm-hmm.
Do any of your grant providers have any specific covenants or provisos around your physical presence?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, they, when we apply for or get received funding, they know this is where we're operating out of, and what we do, and where we're located. And especially if they come to site visits, or anybody, and you're welcome to come visit, does that, they usually realize, oh my gosh, I didn't know what an impact you have in the community. And then in the summertime, we have an eight-week summer program, Monday through Friday, 9:00 to 3:00, same thing, getting, kids getting dropped off and picked up. They filter in maybe for between 8:30 and 9:30, but it can, they can arrive later, and then same, from 2:00 o'clock on, they might get picked up. But also, more kids walk then, because they have more time in the day to come and go. And we continue our educational component throughout the summer, we provide breakfast and lunch to the kids. The park is also a meal site for the Davenport School District. Even though it's owned by Project Renewal, it's open to any kids and families that want to come there to receive meals in the summer. And, but our youth program, also, participants eat lunch at the park.
So are most of the youth then coming from, like, Smart and Jefferson predominantly?
Yep. We have probably about 10 different schools they come from.
Okay.
Well, maybe that's changed now.
That's what I was asking about the bus situation.
Yeah, Jefferson, Smart, we used to be Monroe, but Jefferson, Madison, Smart, Williams, Sunlow, Central, we have All Saints, St. Paul.
Okay.
Some at West.
So they get dropped off just for a couple hours and then picked back up?
Mm-hmm.
I assume other than Smart and Jefferson, you don't have too many walking, other than those schools?
Um, it depends. They might get a ride here, but then they can walk home.
Okay.
Or they walk to grandma's or relatives, or several carpool, because some cousins all come as well. So grandma might pick up two or three different sets of siblings, or an aunt.
All right, thanks, that helps. I'm just picturing the traffic and the, you know, required space, not just for parking, but just for dropping off and picking up.
Right, yep, yep. And that's something we're very vigilant about, because the traffic up and down Warren Street can go quite fast, and so despite the railroad tracks being right there, we do typically, and currently have a sign out front that says, please slow down. We instruct all our parents not to stop in the middle of the street, because they are tempted to do that, because it's a quick drop-off, drop, pickup. But our staff and volunteers, we park further away, so the parking spots right in front of our building are for people to pull over, let their kids out, and go.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the request? Go ahead and introduce yourself.
I'm Joshua Willow, project architect, and I just want to say personally, I'm from this neighborhood. I grew up down here on Sixth Street. I went to school at Holy Trinity Catholic Mission School, which is where 180 is now located, and I just want to bring to your attention that along with Project Renewal, 180 Cafe and Vine, and Humility and Mary Shelter, this is just another addition to that fabric of community resources, so I think it's in the city's benefit to promote this project and go through with the hardship variance, so.
All right, appreciate it.
Yep.
Anyone else?
Hello, I'm Billy Greenwood, and I am a co-leader, Secretary-Treasurer of the Central Community Circle Neighborhood, the district in which Project Renewal falls. Our neighborhood is a recognized neighborhood, the city of Davenport. We have monthly meetings, that city staff and our alderman, our old woman, and the police come to meet with us. At our meeting, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, this parking hardship variance request came up, and there was 100% support in the neighborhood, and the fervent hope was that the, the request would be granted.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak opposed to the request? All right, seeing none. To the applicant, do you have any final comments? All right, thank you. Board discussion, thoughts?
Not one negative issue or comment.
No.
A great community asset.
Yeah, I think staff's remarks regarding the intent of the ordinance for not having business people parking in front of homes adjacent to the property, so knowing that the intent and that this won't, you know, conflict with that intent of the ordinance, I think we're in the clear.
Agreed.
All right, if there's another comments or discussion, I will entertain a motion to approve HV 23-13. I'll make that motion to approve request HV 23-13.
I'll second.
Roll call, please. Blumker?
Aye.
Galliard?
Yes.
And Boyce-Carlson?
Yes.
And, I'm sorry, now Ann. Darlin, yes. Thank you, motion's passed.
Thank you.
Good luck.
I think it's very neat that you are the project architect for a project like this in a neighborhood that you grew up in.
Yeah.
That's wonderful.
I've actually worked with Humility Homes on a vision for their campus, too, right down on West Sixth Street, and then I also did 180's tiny home, which is right behind 180, so.
That has to fill up your heart.
When, when we first, you know, linked up and I told her about my background, she knew some of my friends from back in the day that were part of Project Renewal.
Wow.
So it's, yeah, pretty cool.
That's awesome.
Good stuff.
Yeah.
180s.
Appreciate it. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Give him a second. But you don't have to worry about anyone in the audience coming up to speak opposed. We got that going. All right. All right, next on the agenda is hardship variance request 23-14 of Ben Cantner, I tried that one. On behalf of Habitat for Humanity, Quad Cities, at 329 Oak Street, for a six-foot principal use encroachment into reverse corner-side yard setback with a proposed single-family dwelling, which would be 19 feet from West Fourth Street property line. Davenport Municipal Code requires a 25-foot setback in the residential MF District from West Fourth Street. This is also in Ward Three. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
May I have the staff report, please?
Scott Copes, Development and Neighborhood Services. This photo on this first slide here is looking south. This is Fourth, and then the side street is Oak. The front of the house, I believe, is facing, actually going to be facing Oak, and this will be a side of the house here, there'll be a driveway in this location. And there was a large building in this location, I think it was an apartment building that was located there prior to being vacant. So the request, again, is to reduce a corner-side setback. The, by definition, the zoning ordinance considers Oak the front street, even no matter which direction the actual front door faces. And so that makes the corner-side yard along Fourth Street, that setback is 25 feet. Along with this, we have another code that kind of conflicts with the options the petitioner has, and that is that dwellings must be at a minimum on their least dimension, 24 feet wide. And so if you couple that with the five-foot side yard setback, the width of the lot, either you have a 20-foot wide house and you meet the setback, or you have a 19-foot setback and you meet the width of the house. So those are the kind of the options in that range. So here is the site plan, again, north is at the top now, so the driveway's on the right side. The house, which is 26 feet wide, is in this area here, and then Oak Street is where the front is. So Oak's going to have a 25-foot setback as required, and there's going to be a 19-foot setback along Fourth. This diagram was included in the staff report, and it shows where the former structure was, which had maybe a three or four-foot setback off of Fourth Street. These are the existing house footprints here, so the new post-setback is going to be maybe a foot or two more than what this second structure is, and maybe four feet from that adjacent structure. So it's in the range of, I mean, it's, it's less than what was there before, but it's almost, it almost meets our code requirement, given adjacent requirements or adjacency allowances. We did notify 31 people, and we had no comment within the 200-foot notice area. The findings, the application of the ordinance creating hardship has been met. And number two, physical and topographical conditions do limit the use of the site. Item number three, unique circumstance has been established, and item number four, protection of essential character has been established. Staff recommends approval of the request as proposed.
Good.
And any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Scott, could you go back to where you had the setbacks for the neighboring properties? Yes. And you said that's estimated at just a foot farther back?
Yeah, I measured it was maybe two feet here.
So in all reality, that one maybe is encroaching upon the 25-foot setback.
Right, the one that was there was encroaching, and this one here probably is, yep.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's a 19-foot line, yeah.
Yeah, to me, that doesn't appear to be that much of a discrepancy between the two, so.
All right, any other questions for staff? All right, applicants, you may come to the podium, introduce yourself, and present your petition, or any additions to what Scott presented.
Sure. So my name is Ben Cantner, I'm the Construction Director for Habitat for Humanity Quad Cities. So this would be our 138th house. We started in 1993 in the Quad Cities. This year, we're actually doing eight houses, so it's a big year for us. Let's see, so the 26-foot width there is because we have a standard plan that we tried to build, repeat, because we have volunteers building, and it's easier just to keep it simple, and we attempt to move the porches around to try and make them a little bit different, and, but, so that's the 26 rather than 24. And so we hope to start construction still this fall, and be ready next spring.
Okay, and this, and this is a single family, right? We talked about.
Single family, yes.
Okay, any questions, board members to the applicants?
How, how many people do you normally have working on these, on these homes?
Ah, good question. So normally, we have a volunteer supervisor, or two of them, and then each week, we work Wednesdays and Saturdays, and then sometimes other days when we have like corporate groups that come in. So on an average house, maybe by the time we're done, maybe 150 people have come through and helped out, and there's usually like a core group of regular volunteers that, that come on those Wednesdays and Saturdays.
Do, is it, is it sometimes difficult to find places for the workers to park during the project?
Gotcha. Occasionally, it is, yes. We do our best to work with the neighbors and talk to them before we, we start clogging up all the parking.
And your funding is typically through, through grants, or how is your funding mechanism working?
It's a mix of grants, and then private funders.
Yeah.
So this year, we had an individual funded an entire house, and then we have, actually, this house would be funded by home funds dollars, partially.
To your knowledge, do any of the grantors have any specific provisos or, or issues that you, that you or we need to be aware of in the situation?
No, not that I know of.
All right, so to the east of the proposed home, the blue area driveway, right, and walkway up to the back of the house, the four arch dots, are, are those like the stepping stones?
Stepping stones to the shed.
To a shed, there, yeah. Okay.
So it's Habitat International's policy not to build garages, as we're trying to keep the homes affordable.
Sure. So you just have a shed for plumbing and stuff?
For lawn, yeah, exactly, yep.
Got it. Perfect. All right, any other questions of the applicant? All right, you, you can be seated then, thank you. All right. And when the audience wishes to speak in favor or opposed, seeing none, seeing nobody for that matter. All right, so board discussion. Scott, can you flip back to the slide with the setbacks in the street? There you go. So the one thing I, I So the one thing I, I guess I'm looking at, where it comes to setbacks, in my mind anyhow, is for visibility for, for turning traffic, if, if nothing else. So, in my opinion, you're good, you see the, the yellow line where the, the north side of the building will be, the sidewalk to the north of that between the building and Fourth, approximately where the stop sign should be. So again, you're going to get one car, maybe two cars, that will still have good visibility to the east for that one-way traffic coming at them. So I don't think, I mean, I don't see any issues.
Yeah, I agree.
Any other discussion?
Staff would just add, that's correct, we have a vision triangle requirement for fences and signs, and it's not in that thirty-foot vision triangle, although buildings are allowed to go in that.
Okay.
Site vision triangle.
All right, if there's no other comments, I will accept a motion to approve hardship variance twenty-three dash one-four.
I'll make that motion to approve HV twenty-three dash one-four.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Gallier.
Yes.
Lloyd Carl.
Yes.
Blumker.
Yes.
And Darland.
Yes. And your motion's passed, thank you very much. Well done.
Habitat for Humanity is an American institution, great work. Godspeed.
With no other business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Stand adjourned.